During the communications period of the meeting about COVID-19 information. And so I think that'll be very good. I was curious, are we going to talk about park spaces? Because I think we're all aware, there was an event that's happened in the recent past here, and a private event in Wilsonville, that there's a lot of people that are very concerned about. And so I'm just looking for an avenue that more information can be shared with the community as far as what happened, city's response, and what things look like in the Wilsonville parks right now.
Mr. Kotrov, is that part of what you intended for that segment or not?
No, but I can certainly give you an update on it. We're going to give an update on stuff we've been doing for facilities, and we have a pretty extensive update on HVAC in our different facilities. I think that's one that Councilor Leehan specifically requested, so we have a lot of information on that. I'd certainly be able to give an update at the end of that on the party and vie à bois, and kind of how we're going to be handling those going forward.
Yeah, okay, let's do that at that point. Other questions, council concerns? I don't see any. All right, let's move forward into our work session items here before we lose too much time, starting with the I-5 pedestrian bridge and Gateway Plaza.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp. My name is Zach, and Council, my name is Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager with the city. And we're before you tonight to give you an update on the I-5.
Zach, can you get closer to a mic, please?
Yeah, how's that? Is that better?
That's better.
All right. So we're before you tonight with the I-5 pedestrian bridge and Gateway Plaza project. And since we last met in March, the design team has been working on developing some design concepts for the bridge and the plaza. The team is gearing up for a public engagement here coming up in August. But before we get into that, we wanted to check in with you and make sure the concepts that we've come up with meet the community expectations and have followed the town center planning process. So I also want to note that we've met with the Planning Commission on a couple occasions as we've refined these designs. So we've had their input. And with that, Melissa Erickson with MIG is going to walk you through the bridge concepts and the plaza elements.
Great, thank you, Zach. As Ted mentioned, I'm Melissa Erickson, I'm a principal with MIG, and we are a sub to Dell who is priming pedestrian I-5 bridge. And both Bob Goodrich and Jared Chowbridge are also on the call, should there be technical questions at the end. What I wanted to do is give you a very brief, and especially given I know your timing is running a little bit late today, an overview of kind of where we are with the goal of just kind of confirming that we are heading in the right direction for public input. As we summarized to you earlier this year, we did provide some open house information with the public earlier, kind of gathered a variety of feedback as far as kind of large overarching amenities that the public had identified for both the bridge and the plaza. And along with that, some prioritized kind of elements and themes that came out of it, which are listed kind of on this piece, which we have been infused to the creation of a variety of both bridge designs conceptually as well as plazas. So all of these things are consistent in all of them, they're just articulated in different ways. With that, I wanted to kind of give just a brief nod to kind of context. We are not going to talk about the western ramp. That is fairly consistent in all of them, given kind of property line and limitations there, so that's consistent in all of them. But what we're going to focus on are the three bridge types and designs, as well as the plazas that go with those as far as the overarching considerations. And this is just to give you a reminder of where we're looking at crossing I-5 relation. Frye's is just to the south of where we are currently located. So on the bridge, one of the clean things we heard from the public is addressing separate modes of traffic. And so we are looking at pedestrian activity as well as cyclists and separating those with an overlay that does allow for autonomous vehicles, should that be something that happens in the future, so the bridge design is giving that flexibility. The public provided a variety of feedback as to some general forms and styles of bridges, which we took and kind of advanced. There were some preferences as far as visual images that address that. But all of the options have to address the conditions that are shown at the bottom, which is the cross section showing the vertical clearance that will be required to meet ODOT standards as far as a baseline connectivity. And the fact that we're crossing not only I-5, but also Boon's Ferry and Town Center Loop as an option. Within that, we have come up with three different bridge alternatives, looking really kind of specifically on, they all address safety, circulation, and connection, but they're articulated in different ways. The first option is what we're calling modern artistic. And with this option, it's explicitly artistic, it's essentially a steel girder bridge as a canvas, and then it's kind of applied across that. It's this idea of a ribbon pulling on the Willamette River and the flow of the waters, literally, as kind of the draw. It is a simpler structure, which gives us the opportunity to kind of use embellishment as the means to kind of give that expression of evoking Wilsonville, which is one of the other considerations we've come across. Material's to be determined, but this is a thought of what it might potentially look like. The second option we've looked at is a tied arch bridge. This addresses the public's feedback for looking for something that was a little bit more clean and elegant specifically in structure, yet it's still structurally significant. There are other tied arch bridges around, but there are no double tied arches, and that's probably one of the cleanest delineations of this as far as that expression. The dotted is slightly angled, so that there is a sense of kind of, as you're walking or biking across this, the envelope of the bridge alternates vertically, and so it gets closer at the top as well, a sense to kind of provide that, both the visual piece from I-5, as well as when you're actually on the structure. So the configuration on this is slightly more unique than what we've seen before. The third option is a cable stay, and this addresses the response for having something that was structurally impressive and a little bit stronger on the vertical take. It hits that modern and distinctive characteristic that we also heard from the public. The cable arrangement would be unique to this particular crossing, and we're looking at some options for that. It is a nod to the historic Cable Ferry Bridge in a new and modern form for that expression. We'll come back to those at the end. Related to those, we also came up with plaza options that took again those themes and elements that we heard from the public. They all address, you know, a variety of sustainable features with stormwater, social seating, different amenities, shade. And they all have some iteration of addressing the lower condition, which is a cross section that shows where there is an overhead structure, where the bridge is transitioning to a ramp where you can see underneath because it's elevated, a section where that ramp is starting to meet grade, and so it either has more enclosed with walls and/or with an earthen embankment, and then a section that is on grade. So in all versions, we look at a variety of options for how that is addressed. We came up with three different iterations, which come up with kind of a wide variety of options, both from having larger gathering areas to smaller gathering areas to being slightly more passive, so there's a range of opportunities. We have consistently kind of pulled off of this river flow idea of Wilson, Willamette River, pardon me, as a consistent component. Two of these options use what we call the swoop, which is this kind of smooth arcing transition from bridge to ramp that basically allows some spaces to be basically hugged by that process. And one option that actually has a loop that allows for a tighter grade change to kind of condense that footprint, and we'll look at those just briefly in detail. These are all very conceptual, obviously, but trying to take a look at a range of different components and trying to address a range of activities and interactions that occur. They all address stormwater, they will all have art, the format and form of those is yet to be determined. They all have some sense of a gateway, they all connect to the Emerald chain off to the northern edge and allow that pedestrian spine to connect through. But they all are slightly articulated in different ways from having in the gateway loop. A little bit more like an event lawn is kind of the primary gathering space. The River Oxbow has a slightly more passive approach that's much more about the meandering path for someone to experience that opportunity. And then Drops and Ripples, which has a series of small or interconnected areas that allow for a range of different outdoor rooms to be provided. So I said I was going to make it brief, and we can certainly go back and take a look at it. But what we're hoping to do is, as we are prepping for a virtual open house as well as another online survey, to help kind of get a deep dive into these so we can kind of clarify a singular direction. What we hope to get from you is just kind of, I guess, confirmation that we have interpreted public feedback, and at least we're providing them a range of things that address what we've heard from the public. And I guess looking for guidance on that as we gear up getting, moving towards 30% drawings, but we need a clear vision first.
Okay, I got Council on a little tiny picture on the side here, so I'm not sure if I'm seeing everybody. Yeah, I've got everybody, so we're probably going to want to refer to the slides, so I don't want to lose them. Comments from Council at this point? I guess I would want to toss out something just off the top of my head. Ms. Erickson, could you go back to your very title, first slide? Keep going. That one. Can you enlarge that lower right quadrant block?
Unfortunately, that is embedded, so I cannot.
Embedded, okay.
My apologies.
I'm looking at that pathway with the railings and with all of the greenery along it, and thinking about experiences I've had on urban paths and some other parts of the country that are very similar to that. And thinking about the values that are stated, are drawn from the discussion that's been had about integrating and harmonizing with nature. And I look at all of the greenery along that path and the ambiance that I think it gives it in comparison to the starkness of the illustrated bridge types that are all hard surface with no nature on them. And I like the idea of having something like this pathway that integrates the nature part into the bridge or onto the bridge in some ways itself, and not just after you get off the end of the bridge. I don't know if that was discussed.
It was as an idea, I think we're certainly happy to kind of revisit that. Obviously, some of that has to do with the structural weight, because wet plant material and trees in particular is a structural component. I think one of the main concerns that came up as we looked at it, to be honest, had to do with the fact that now we're looking at an 18-foot wide bridge in order to kind of provide for that framework. And so if we're putting planting in, we're going to have to make it wider, which is of course is a cost consideration. So I think there's certainly options for us to try and take a look at it, and maybe we'll come up with some other unique options, but duly noted.
Yeah, just maybe a little pullout at the last moment to actually enter the bridge over the road itself or something. Anyway, that was my reaction, and I just offer that as a cue. Councilor Leehan?
Yes, I would say, if you go forward, I was really excited about that river one. That one, yeah. I think that is really striking, both from the freeway view of it and going across it. I hadn't thought about having a bridge like that, that would have this river. This would seem much more noticeable and different, especially for traffic on the freeway, than any other kind of standard bridge type. I think it's so distinctive that, and especially given that now you are very, if you're coming from Portland, it's kind of a cue that you're almost to the Willamette. So here's a representation of the river you are about to cross. But I didn't know we were even considering something as artsy as this one, but this is very distinctive, whether it has plants in it or doesn't have plants in it. I think this looks like air and water right there. So I really like that one.
Councilor Lindvall?
Well, I think to answer your question, Melissa, I think that the options that are presented are consistent with what the input has been and give some options for, to move forward with getting more input and having the "Let's Talk Wilsonville" meetings as well. One question that I had, I believe in one earlier discussion, I didn't know whether it was at a Planning Commission meeting that I was listening to, or if it was in a public session that we were having, but I thought I had heard that there was going to be the name of Wilsonville somewhere on the bridge. And is that still going to be, is that still being considered?
It is still being considered. So I think with all three bridges, there's a wide variety of customizations that can happen on any of these, and I think in some ways, the modern artistic shows it more than the others, just because we had to actually give you something to respond to. But any of the options, the barriers along the side can be customized, the lighting can be addressed, there's a variety of pavement components. And so in all of those pieces, there's different layers of how that could be, whether it is literally the text of Wilsonville, an image, whether it's some other kind of applied piece. And we're going to be asking for some feedback on that at both the digital open house and on the online survey, so that we can kind of tease that out a little bit.
Well, I would agree, just if I'm putting my vote in right now with these three, I'm with Councilor Leehan, I love this one. I think this is very distinctive, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor West?
Couple of questions is, around lighting, I don't know, maybe it's too early to do that. Can that ribbon be LED lit and change colors? I'm reminded of Woodburn's Bridge, and maybe it's a little too Vegas for the community, but I think that even changing LED colors, you can have streaming Wilsonville, just scroll through. I mean, I don't want people getting wrecks on the freeway because they're getting too excited about our bridge, but I think that one of the things that makes the bridge in Woodburn so appealing is for different events, Christmas, or holidays, or Pride, or all these different kind of community events, they change the color, right? Even you see the Moda do that, the Moda Center, you go down the freeway, it could be red, blue, but they once again, they do Pride colors too. So I don't know if that's an option. There's two things I look at. I want the cheapest bridge that does the job, based on what I'm hearing feedback from citizens in Wilsonville. But, you know, within the ability to also have good value and be appealing, and I think maybe lighting is a good way to get a lot of bang for your buck.
Yeah, and we have, we'll have a specific question on the survey specifically about lighting, because we also agree with you that that makes a big difference. And all of these could be lit, I mean, the cables could have lights on them, those could change, the actual overstructure could be lit itself to change. We do see lighting as kind of a key component. Obviously, we have to work with an ODOT's requirement, so, and not being distractible, but Woodburn being an excellent example of kind of what has been allowed and what's working. We're certainly looking at a range of pieces, and we anticipate that all of them will all have lighting anyway for pedestrian safety, but I think as an artistic expression, we're looking at that for all of them.
One last question, do we have any design plans for benches along the way for people that aren't able to walk that far to have some point of rest, especially, you know, disabled, people that don't have the ability to walk, or be as mobile, or mobility within the senior community that still want to access this feature and amenity? We've talked, I know we've mentioned it before, but where are we on that design piece? I just don't see that in any of these.
Yeah, you don't see it because we are not at that level yet. There had been some discussions earlier about not wanting to encourage people to occupy the bridge at one point in conversation. But duly noted that obviously we want to make sure that it's an area that all are able to do, and if you're low on endurance, trying to take a look at it. I think at this point, we're probably looking at kind of the wings, so you have a chance once you do the grade change to kind of catch your breath, and then cross at the relatively level elevation of the bridge itself, and then rest on the opposite side. But we haven't gotten there yet, but I'll certainly add that to the considerations.
Thank you for your update and work.
Sure.
You moved on me. Councilor Agalov?
Thank you. I think, you know, all three of the different concepts or ideas for the bridge itself, it's interesting, they're all so distinctly different, but I think they all do have aesthetic value and possibility. So I think they're good options to put in front of the community and see what the community responds and what they say to these three very different options, and I'm glad to see that kind of variety, I guess. I was curious on the one, the ribbon option, one, the modern artistic one, because in some of the images, it shows that there's a shadow from that blue design that's coming overhead, and I wondered if that either would potentially offer any sun or rain protection, because that could be kind of an interesting benefit too, to something like this. So I was curious about that. And then also, I had a few questions about the landing area. Let's see, I'm going through my council packet to that page. I reviewed the town center plan, some of those materials, because of course, this has really come out of the town center plan itself, and all of the participation, the public participation that we had go into that plan. And this, the bridge really kind of emerged as, you know, one of the big priorities for the town center plan, and I see that it could bring a lot of vibrancy for traffic and bicycles and pedestrians and different types of mobility into the town center area, which I believe is important. You know, there was a strong desire for ways to safely access that town center area. So one of my questions is, with having the bikes and the pedestrians, and I like having that cross section, is there an advantage to the swoosh versus the spiral as far as having conflicts, potential conflicts between the bikes and the pedestrians? I'd be curious about that. And then another thing that kind of stood out to me is in that first example, the Drops and Ripples named example, it seems that that idea has more of like these destination spots, right, in the landing part. And again, that was a theme that came out of the town center plan, was a desire to have these community gathering places, where the meandering one is more just kind of like constant movement, or solitary walking more, or something, I don't know. So I was drawn to having those kind of destination spots, and I suppose maybe that could be woven into any number of plans, but it was just punctuated or articulated more in the designs that we were looking at for that first example. So those were a couple of my reactions or questions, too.
Sure. So modern artistic, as far as the blue shimmer being shade or such, that is kind of our intent, at least that it gives some diffusion. Now, how much shade it gives, I think is, you know, up to question. And I think depending on the material, there's a question of how much rain protection might have, because if it's perforated, then obviously it's going to be some, but at least it would be slightly lighter. But all things that we're looking at, because we also know that it's hot and exposed this time of year, and so that's a consideration. The bike-pet conflict, so we've certainly talked about this a lot. We know that that was one of the big issues that we had for just general circulation and safety in trying to address that, and then trying to balance, making sure that this actually has enough resonance that people can occupy and enjoy the space, as well as those that are commuting and just kind of going through. So we've tried to make sure that the central gathering spaces, for the most part, are kind of off to the side, and so there's at least a component, I mean, we're going to have to do a little bit more fine-grained design to address kind of the slowing, particularly around the Oxbow, where there's kind of a little bit more of a centralized area, so we can try and address a variety of different ways to try and at least, try and address speed, or knowing that there's conflict and/or for pedestrians, so kids aren't just like running out in front of a, you know, full-on forest.
Exactly, yeah.
It's a little bit easier on Drops and Ripples, we particularly pulled those off so that people are kind of in transit before those happen, and we pulled it off to the side. So we tried to address it in a couple of different ways, but we know all of them is going to have to try and take a look at that. So I'd say that they all address it differently, but they all need additional, you know, fine tuning to try and take a look at that bike-pet conflict. And then as far as the destinations, obviously, since we helped write the town center plan, we've been looking at that a lot, and trying to make sure that we try and pull those in. And while I think Drops and Ripples, again, probably articulates it the most clearly, trust me that there are some others that are just maybe a little less obvious, but they would certainly, we understand there's a need to create some destinations and flexibility of use, so that they all have that, it's just, again, trying to provide pretty, three different options, both for the bridge and the plaza, so there's a wider range, and that hopefully can help us kind of tease out what are the components that resonate. Because to be honest, we don't really anticipate any one of these for the plazas being the choice. I think it's going to be aspects of those that will morph. The bridge is, I think, a little bit cleaner, and obviously, the plaza has to respond to the bridge, because they have to be, you know, kind of meshed together, but those are different spots. Did I answer all your questions?
Yep, I think so.
Yeah, no?
I hate to do this, but we have to move on. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
We're running a very tight agenda tonight. So I think we got what we need in terms of getting out into the community, right? So we have several really good alternatives, and we can get out in the community and shop this around, and we'll come back to you.
That sounds great, thanks so much.
Okay.
All right, so we want to do the TGM grant next?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Knapp and City Council. My name is Kim Reibel, Senior Planner with the city. Before you tonight, on the agenda is a resolution of support for a TGM grant application that we are putting together for some development code work in the Basalt Creek planning area. This is in support of one of your council goals, which is to get the area ready for development. So in your packet, we laid out what we were looking at in terms of how we would approach the project. So right now, I just want to take an opportunity to answer any questions you might have before we go into tonight's presentation, as well as if you have any comments for us to consider as we finalize the present, or the application. So that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. Transportation and Growth Management Grant, CD, I think, and ODOT involved in that. Council, any questions for staff? We on the right track with this? If we can get some funds to do this kind of forward-looking planning that we've done so much of and have had good results with? I don't see any questions, Ms. Reibel.
All right, great.
I think everybody...
Well, thank you very much, and I will see you later tonight then.
All right, excellent. Regional Water Providers Consortium. I sent a note to staff this afternoon, I don't know who all remembers, at the time we chose to resign from this particular group in 2015, I think it was, Wilsonville was a member of nine separate water planning groups. And it was never clear to me, and remains unclear to me, how we can possibly have nine separate groups that are efficiently and functionally planning for how we source, preserve, distribute, and utilize water. So I've asked staff to help us address that.
It's Martin on the line.
Thank you for having me, Mayor. This is Martin Montalvo, Operations Manager for Public Works Department. The item we have before you today is a request to reestablish our membership with the Regional Water Providers Consortium, and I'll get specifically to your question here in just a moment. One of the things that I was tasked with when I arrived here at the city a little over a year ago was trying to improve our emergency management program. And I think we've made some good stride in that, I think it's prepared us to be responsive to the recent events, and this is another endeavor to help us improve our emergency management program. Prior to coming to the city, I was with Oregon City, and one of my heavy duties I had there, and probably one of the best experiences... and probably one of the best experiences I had was, was, was with the Emergency Planning Committee on the Regional Water Providers Consortium. So the Water Providers Consortium has three primary tasks and focus. One is, uh, programming for conservation for amongst the water, uh, water providers within the region. The other is outreach and training for our staff on current practices, current activities, um, and trends within the industry. And then the third is emergency management and planning for disruptions within the critical water infrastructure. In 2015, when, um, the city was a member of the consortium, more of their focus was on conservation. I can say now, uh, the, the focus has shifted. Their, uh, policy committee has instructed them, and their documents will show that they're shifting more towards an equal, um, approach to all three of these avenues, with recently a, a much heavier influence in the emergency management field. They're a standing committee member in the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization. Um, I'm also on the steering committee for that group, um, and the membership there's been able to get them, uh, several federal grants, um, in tunes to several hundred thousands of dollars. Well, a couple of the endeavors that they've done with that is purchasing portable water treatment plants. In the event there's ever a water disruption within the region, we're able to make water with portable plants that we can bring out to any location and then distribute it within the systems. And that was a project that the Water Providers Consortium advocated for. They've got, uh, portable distribution trailers, so that if you have a disruption just within the distribution system, you can still supply water, um, to your residents within an area. They've received federal grants for additional programs to help with, um, conservation as well as emergency management, and they do routine annual training for all of its members on the tools and equipment that they acquire through these grants. So you had asked what other organizations are we actively participating in? So for Public Works, there's only three other organizations that we participate in. One is the Oregon Association of Water Utilities. Our annual fee there is about $1,100. And what we get from them is discounted, uh, costs on additional training for some of our members, um, as well as, uh, some, uh, guidance on current trends and activities that are occurring within the field. The other organization is the American Backflow Prevention Association. So all of my staff here, um, in the water department are certified backflow inspectors. They have to get certified every year, and with your certification, you get membership, um, to this organization. So it's kind of a buy one, get one free. And then the last one is the American Waterworks Association Pacific Northwest Chapter. We pay about $1,400 a year with that. And again, it gets us, uh, knowledge, some, uh, training discounts, and, um, awareness of what's currently going on within the field. So those are the, the three that we've been able to identify. Um, I'm here today advocating for reestablishing cities' membership in the Regional Water Providers Consortium. That's all I have. I don't have a canned presentation. We just wanted to get your feel on, uh, the attempt to try and reestablish this. I'm open for any questions you may have.
Good, thank you, Martin. Um, what's the cost on membership for that?
So the cost is based on your annual average, uh, gallons per day and the number of services that you have. So it's currently estimated 16,400, and then as MGD demand increases and certain, uh, individual services increase, um, that will potentially increase.
So the other organizations, and I don't know that I know them all, but I'm sure Twallin Valley Water District is something that we're involved with.
Yes.
And all the various groups that are working on the Big Pipe Project, uh, to, uh, run water further north on the west side of the metro area. Uh, I don't honestly remember who all else we were involved with. It just seemed like there was an awful lot of overlapping objectives and, and, uh, scope of interaction in these groups. And I, you know, I'm wondering if that's changed really or not.
So I, I don't know what groups the, the city was party to at that time. I can tell you from the research we've done, there's only four active groups that we're currently coordinating with, within the specific field of, of water, potable water. Um, and I can, uh, who else is participating in the region? Wilsonville is the only major, uh, water provider, so every city is not a member. If you don't make your own water, you don't, you don't belong to this group. So we're the only regional water provider that is not a member.
Council, what are your thoughts? Councilor Ackerman?
I see, um, some benefit in especially the, um, the emergency planning and the ability to respond to an emergency situation. Um, I think that's really i- i- an important investment. Um, I do wonder, however, if there would be a large occurrence such as a, um, major earthquake or something like this, wouldn't everybody be wanting the exact same equipment that the, the group has? Like, how, how would that work in as far as getting access to the many different members? Because I, I think there was 23 different members in this organization, just out of curiosity. How, how does that work out?
So if, if you think in terms of a Cascadia event, we're, we're all in the exact same situation, and the equipment will basically be used by who it's tasked to. So I was able to get several pieces of emergency management equipment when I was with the city of Oregon City, and, and the agreement's basically to say, you get to use it, you house it, you have first dibs, but if somebody else needs to use it for a more regional issue, then you have to let them borrow it. Um, perfect example, uh, Maria hit Puerto Rico in, uh, 2018. The Portland metro area almost shipped all nine of those water treatment plants to Puerto Rico to help them make water. Um, if there was a situation where our plant was down and we needed to be able to make water, and we had one of those, that's something that if we owned it, we'd get first dibs at it. If we don't own it, then I get to reach out to all our partners and members and say, can I get assistance with these pieces of emergency equipment? The emergency equipment is just one of the tools, though, that they provide. I'll, I'll give you another, for instance, of one thing they were able to do that I was really impressed with. When, um, when Wilsonville had the cyanotoxin issue several years ago, they, shortly after that, uh, the Regional Water Providers Consortium, we started working on protocols on how do we deal with cyanotoxin? It wasn't anything, when I was at Oregon City, we weren't thinking about it. It wasn't on our radar. Uh, and then that group, with that mind think of professionals all working in the same field, started preparing protocols that we shared, um, and cross-vetted against one another to try and figure out a process, how do we deal with it? It's, it's the planning process that they help you with.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I guess that, that makes sense, um, to me, and I do see some value in, in having that sort of network and, um, investing in our systems in that way, so.
Councilor Lee.
So what is their, um, ongoing commitment to water conservation? That seemed like that used to be, uh, a, a big aspect of them, but it, it doesn't seem as noticeable anymore, but...
Yeah, it, it is still part, part of their core mission. Um, their policy group has instructed them, especially in the last few years, especially with the, the rise of the discussion of, um, Cascadia-style events, um, of preparing more for the emergency management components. And that's really been my exposure to this group. Um, but conservation is still a heavy aspect of their work. It's a third of their work, to be completely honest with you. But conversely, as a water provider, I'm regulatorily required to have some of these conservation programs. I've got to write a conservation plan update in the next two years. And they are there to provide assistance with that, as well as emergency management, education, and outreach.
And then the other, excuse me, the other concern at the time when we left was the pretty strong, um, dominance of Portland and the Bull Run, uh, water system that dominated decisions and, uh, administration of the organization. So, uh, I, I'm presuming it's perhaps more egalitarian within the group than it was at the time?
So, Councilor, I, as far as the politics group, I really can't speak to that. I work predominantly with the emergency management and the education group. Um, it's a little out of my wheelhouse to speak as to how the politics and the, the overall policy group administers. Yeah, I can tell you, there are 23 active members, um, each of them representing a different water provider, and there's pretty good discourse amongst the people I interact with, and it's not per se, you know, Portland-centric. Um, we all have different sources of water, so we're dealing with very similar issues.
Councilor West.
Um, what does this bring us that we aren't already prepared for? Are we already well-prepared for a Cascadia emergency? When do we, do we already have the plan in place to make sure that Wilsonville's taken care of? Does this really offer us more than what we have now? Um, I'm trying to see, like, what the big difference is besides, and, I don't know, I don't know if $16,000 to be part of a group is a lot. Um, and is it, what is, and does this mean that we were missing something and not being part of this group and being ready for Cascadia?
So I'll, I'll, I think I'll reply that in, in three parts. Firstly, yes, we do have plans in, in place for the plant and the distribution system to respond to various emergencies. What I always like to tell people with emergency management is you don't know what you don't know. There's something out there that somebody else is working on or has been exposed to that myself or our team may never have experienced before. And being part of a group of individuals while working in the same field, working in the same direction, and getting that group think as to, hey, has anybody thought about this? You know, as I mentioned earlier, when cyanotoxin hit, several of us were like, oh, well, what's our plan for that? And our two paragraph section in that, uh, the agency I was with at that time expanded to a eight-page document, because you had that availability of individuals that you're working with. Lastly, what are we missing out on? So every year, there's emergency management exercises that this group helps sponsor. There's, um, some community events for, uh, trying to prepare the community for just, uh, water scarcity events that we're not participating in. So one of the things that I did in my previous agency is, we issued out these five-gallon emergency water jugs that said, had emergency messaging all over it, and it said, you know, store this, keep it around, if there's ever an event where we got shaking, one of the first things we're going to do is turn off the taps, so that we don't lose the reservoirs. And they gave them these opportunities to be, to be prepared and provided supplies to community members to have emergency water. Those are the things we're missing out on.
I, I guess I'll say, you know, we are all very familiar with being in an emergency right now. We're in a pandemic. It's causing global devastation, um, and it's been very difficult, and I don't know if we could have been prepared enough for some, what we're facing right now, and we can always be prepared more. Um, but that ability to rally resources in an emergency, the ability to have a continuity of communication and relationships, and the ability to collaborate well, uh, through my training, I know is essential, um, in an emergency. And as elected, it's our, I think, our primary responsibility to the health and safety of the community is number one, to do our best to participate in that. Um, and so I, I really feel, uh, similar to Councilor Ackerman about the, you know, this is, when the catastrophe hits, what do you always hear? Well, I wish we were a little bit more prepared. And if they've become a little more broad in their mission, um, and have that ability to provide that support, um, I, I think it's really worth looking at to make sure that, I mean, $16,000, I don't know if it's a lot or not, but if we can, if, if that's a reasonable amount and we're going to get value out of it in case that there's an emergency, um, I think it's something we should really strongly consider.
Councilor Blenwell?
Well, I've had an opportunity to look at the, um, materials as well, and, uh, it looks to me like the cost benefit is, um, is worth our, um, membership and, in the group. Um, I, I think you, it's not only an emergency management issue, it's also a best practices issue. And, uh, since we would be in with, like, communities in terms of making our own water, um, I think we, it's good for us to have that voice at the table as well. So I support this.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Montalvo, you need anything further from Council at this point, or?
No, Mr. Mayor, we wanted to gauge your interest before we bring a resolution back to you for membership, so we'll be bringing something back in a future, uh, council meeting. I very much appreciate your time.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, Mr. Rappold, Urban Forestry Management, please.
Just get cleaned up here for a minute. So, which way should I go here, pass with the? Okay. All right, good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council. Yes, I'm here tonight to just give you a very brief overview about the Urban Forest Management Plan and the process that will be undertaking over the next nine months or so, and then certainly to receive your initial input. I did a, a similar presentation to the Planning Commission in June. We kicked off the project at the end of May, so we've just been working on some of the initial steps to get the project going in terms of the inventory and the community outreach and some other elements. So, let's see here. Just trying to advance here. There we go. So certainly, an urban forest is, is, is an intentional process in many ways, in terms of the planning, the, uh, management, and the ultimate sustainability of that forest, as this quote shows you. And certainly that's been reflected in terms of what we've done here in Wilsonville. As you're aware, there's a lot of benefits that, uh, urban forests can provide, individual trees, today is one example of that, certainly with hot weather like this. Um, the shading that trees provide, as well as what they do in terms of conserving energy, are critically important. So there's a vast array, as you can see here, of things that our, our trees provide for us in our community, and what they do, um, in terms of maintaining, you know, the values that we really want in this community. So you can certainly quantify that, and people have done very, you know, many different things in terms of looking at the value associated with trees, with urban forests, whether it's based on property values or energy use. And so it's all, you know, it's really something that, uh, has become very, you know, very studied and very scientifically justified in terms of what we do. So in regards to Wilsonville's urban forest, we're certainly blessed with a very extensive forest. Uh, it's based on all of that good planning and management and sustainability that we've done with preserving this forest. And so what we want to do is move forward in terms of looking at it and trying ways to, uh, to improve it and make it better for the future. So all of this is based on existing things that we're doing within the community, and then things that could be added potentially in the future as far as what comes out of the plan. You know, we look at everything from planning and policy that leads into tree preservation, the tree maintenance that we do, the planting projects. I've certainly had a lot of extensive experience working with Friends of Trees, what we do in terms of risk management, how we work with the public, as well as our own properties in regards to that, and how do we deal with, you know, as you were just discussing, emergency situations, where we have to deal with maybe a lot of trees that have come down, or, you know, issues that are certainly very urgent. So the city has had a long relationship in terms of the Tree City USA, that's 22 years we've been, you know, involved with that organization. We're also Sterling Tree City, which requires that you have more than 10 years' worth of growth awards. Also, we have a Heritage Tree Program, which, um, currently there's nine designated trees. They include a variety of species, one in particular, the RV short tree, that is pretty exceptional in terms of, of species. And then, as I mentioned, Friends of Trees, we've had this long relationship with them through the Green Spaces Program, which is 18 years now. And then we, just over the last year, started, uh, working with their Neighborhood Trees Program, which will start, you know, bringing this more within, to the neighborhoods within the community. So what is an urban forest? I'll talk a little bit more about that in terms of our project. And then ultimately, it leads to goals, objectives, and actions that really take it forward in terms of that strategy that we develop. And so those are going to be critical in terms of defining, you know, what do we actually want to do, such as, we might have a goal to say that at this point, we have 20% urban forest coverage. Well, we want to have 30% in the next 25 years. So that's one potential. And then we'll have a very specific implementation plan in terms of dates and, you know, things that will need to be done in terms of moving that plan forward. Ultimately, in order to, you know, assess whether we're doing this in the best possible way, there'll be a monitoring plan that will come with the plan, and that'll help us to assess, you know, in future years, how we're doing. So the city selected through an RFP, a very qualified consultant, they're called Planet Geo. They have extensive experience with developing plans such as this. It's basically, it's a one-stop consultant in terms of what we're getting as far as the project management, every aspect that'll be part of the plan, from the tree inventory through the community engagement. So they're really specialized in terms of the work that they do and the expertise and knowledge that they bring to a project like this. So I included within the staff report, the scope of work that we have with Planet Geo. So I'm just going to quickly go through some of the elements that are in that scope of work. So as I mentioned, we're trying to develop ultimately a long-term strategy where this is going to be at least a 25-year timeframe in terms of the plan. So we're looking at a number of decades into the future. What do we want to see? And then we're going to be looking at the urban forest status. So that's components such as land use, existing canopy coverage, the values that people place in terms of that existing forest and the future forest that we hopefully have. And then certainly, current and future issues are always going to be something that'll be very important. One topic that certainly is going to be addressed in the plan is climate change. Ultimately, we may see, you know, a lot of differences in terms of what this urban forest looks like in 20 to 30 to 40 years, especially in regards to the species that are adapted to growing here and being able to sustain themselves as we see climate change take place. We want to take a very extensive look at our forestry operations. This covers everything from permitting, the development code that we have, through the maintenance and management that we're actively doing within the community. So we're going to spend some time within the planning process doing interviews of all the staff that are really critical in terms of making this, you know, function as far as an urban forestry program. And then I'll spend a little bit more time on the next slide in terms of the two focus areas that we have. Those are Town Center and Charbonneau. And they were chosen because of sort of the urgent needs that we have in regards to existing conditions there, or the planning, the extensive planning that took place in Town Center, where this plan can be a complement to that. Community engagement, as similar to what's happening today in terms of COVID, we're going to be dealing mostly with virtual types of meetings, online surveys. We're going to have some specific targeted outreach within Charbonneau especially to engage the community there and to talk through the issues that have come up over the years with the Northern Red Oaks that are along French Prairie Road. And then ultimately, as with most plans, we'll end up with the draft, which we'll bring to the city council. We'll have presentations associated with that in terms of the council and the Planning Commission. And then we'll finalize it in terms of the plan that we end up with. What's really going to be important, though, as far as an element of this plan, is how do we take it forward in terms of dealing with the public? How do we take the information in the plan and convey that to them in a way where they can use it and we can all, you know, benefit from what's in the plan? So we'll be looking at some materials and other information in terms of whether it's our website or handouts, where we can work with the public moving forward. And then, like I said, we'll have a monitoring plan that'll have some goals in terms of what we want to see as far as the future, and that we'll be checking in on those as we move forward to make sure that we're accomplishing what's in the plan. So the two focus areas, as I mentioned, are Town Center and Charbonneau. And starting with Town Center, what we're trying to do is basically complement some of the things that happened with the master planning for this area. And so what this plan is going to provide is a tree inventory for areas that weren't included in our tree inventory from 2018 that the city put together. That included 24,000 trees. So we're going to probably be able to do close to about 2,000, a little over 2,000 trees as part of the inventory that's taking place this week, the consultants in town to do that. And so one of the elements that they're working on within the Planning Division, or they're going to be starting soon, is a streetscape plan for Town Center. And what we want to determine with this inventory and the ultimate assessment are the trees that are most important in terms of retention. You can kind of think of this as the same approach that was applied to Villebois. And the reason that Villebois is such a distinguished community in so many ways is because of the trees, the mature trees that were preserved. So we want to make the same type of effort within Town Center to preserve what's most important. Within Charbonneau, as I mentioned, the 800-plus Northern Red Oaks along French Prairie Road have had certain issues associated with them over the years in terms of their status, their condition. And it's certainly been something that our Public Works Department has struggled with. Our Planning Division has dealt with a lot of issues in terms of talking to the public about those trees. What was wrapped into this project was the Charbonneau Street Tree Study. And so that was a project that was separate from the plan at one point, but we rolled that into the urban forest management plan. And so we're moving together, you know, in a coordinated approach in terms of looking at these issues. So like I said, we'll have some specific outreach within Charbonneau to discuss these trees, and then hopefully come up with a decision-making criteria in terms of how can we systematically deal with issues that come up with these trees over time. And then ultimately, there will be, just as within the plan itself, but this will be specific to these areas, there'll be goals, objectives, and recommendations that will be rolled into the plan. So just to wrap it up here, so the plan framework that you'll ultimately see will include all of these elements in terms of the policies and plans, that information we gathered through talking to our staff and looking at our existing urban forestry program, all the information that they gathered in terms of the inventory work, and the information we already had through the 2018 inventory, which, like I mentioned, was 24,000 trees already. And then we'll set some benchmarks in terms of what do we want to see in terms of the future. Excuse me. And then there'll be this strong community engagement component, where we'll gather information from the public through these online surveys and virtual meetings. And one of the unique elements that Planet Geo brings to this process is they use the U.S. Forest Service Audit System, which looks at 11 different categories in terms of your existing urban forest. And then they identify resource gaps and other gaps that are a part of the existing status of that forest. So ultimately, excuse me, there'll be strategies, targets, actions, and then, like I said, this monitoring plan in terms of how do we evaluate as we go forward. So we're looking at a pretty short timeline. As I mentioned, we started this about the beginning of June. So we're hoping to wrap up maybe by January or February of next year. And so in between now and then, we'll be doing all these various steps in terms of the tree inventory, the public engagement, and the assessment of our urban forest, and then ultimately, how that feeds into the goals and objectives. Excuse me, and the recommendations that come out of the plan. So that's all I have for you tonight. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have or take your initial feedback on the plan.
Questions, discussion? Counselor Akerwal.
I guess I'll throw this out there. Thank you very much for the presentation, and I think this seems like an exciting project. There's just one small point that I wanted to clarify. And that is in, let's see, page 33 of our packets, I think it's, it's in Exhibit A, Scope of Work, page three of nine. There's this section of, it's talking about the tree inventory data field. And it lists off, these are the data items that will be collected. And I just wanted to confirm, you know, when you gave the presentation, you talked about how, oh, I can't remember the phrase that you used, but looking at if different species are going to be thriving now, will they still thrive in the future? And kind of looking at kind of this current and future situation, what's working, what's not working. Along those lines, I wanted to see, are we capturing data on the trees that we have now or the trees that we may have in the future, in observations of conflicts that those trees are having with sidewalks or things like that? Just so that we're not reproducing issues that we have now into the future when a specific type of tree maybe doesn't turn out to be the best fit for a environment that it's being used in. So I didn't see that as a data field, as something that was collected, but I was hopeful that that is part of all of this, that we would have that type of information on when conflicts are occurring.
Yes. No, it's a very good question. In fact, we had a follow-up discussion with the consultant about the tree inventory. And there's, I think about somewhere between 10 to 15 categories that they're looking at, and certainly conflicts like that will be very important. We have a specific category or criteria, or criteria in regards to that. So yeah, we'll want to know where, if we're doing the inventory work, are those conflicts currently existing, or will they exist in the future? So yeah, that's critical information.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Counselor Lehan.
Yes, I would just say, I think this looks like a good plan. It's certainly an important plan for the city of Wilsonville because one of the things that Wilsonville is known for is its urban forest, has been for a long time and continues to be, both in terms of our heritage trees, but also our existing street trees and our efforts to preserve existing trees in new developments, which Villebois was an excellent example of us laying out the streets even to try to save the existing trees and then add to that. And so anyway, I think it's an important part of our reputation, of our past and our future. So a good urban forestry program is important to the city.
Thank you.
Counselor West.
I agree with both Counselor Akerwal and Counselor Lehan. I think also, when we deal with the real issues around climate change right now, the more trees, the better. And I think that that is a really beautiful and efficient way to help deal with the carbon in the air and offset Wilsonville's carbon footprint. And what a better way to do that than to have your urban forest helping you out with that. And so I think that this is great. Thank you for the presentation. It's kind of, I think, for, I wouldn't be blowing this, as it kind of strikes a little bit of a moment of pride, that we have such a rich history with trees and our urban forest. And I mean, even walking in Villebois, you mean, you might see a deer run through the street, you sure might see a coyote, birds of all kinds. I've been come, I mean, just the pleasure it brings. And it has, I think it also really speaks to where the urban meets the rural, just where we sit on the river and then farmlands and things that are really crown jewels of Oregon. We're so blessed to sit right where we sit. And I think it speaks to our culture as a community and as a state, that we are forward-thinking in leaders and environmental stewardship. It's one of the big things that drive and motivate this council and our vision is environmental stewardship. And I think that we are living that out in practice. And I appreciate all of the work that has gone in and the forththought to make sure that we adhere to those goals. So thank you, and thanks for the plan.
Thank you. We have one more item. We have one more item, Mayor.
All right. Yeah, we should wrap up here pretty soon. I guess, not to be too combative here, but we did have State Representative Parrish introduce a statute that I believe passed that says we ought to log our street trees on a rotation cycle. And hopefully, we're not caught in that kind of a scenario. I'm not clear what the level of that state rule is or how it may or may not have been set up since it left, but I was rather alarmed at that when it came out. I think that as our community is maturing, we do need to also watch, as Counselor Akerwal points out, how we have conflicts. I'm seeing in most of our neighborhoods, trees that were planted too close together, and now they're obtaining mature sizes, that's a problem. And we're going to have to take some of them out. I've wondered about how close together some of our street trees are being planted because I see mature examples of those that could not function in the amount of space provided in our streetscapes. And so we need to be thinking ahead about this considerably more than I think we have in the last 20 years. And I'm not sure, agree the objectives, the goals of having a good canopy in our city adverse species, lots of places where they can be aesthetically pleasing as well as help with our heat scape and all that sort of thing. It is complicated. I understand there's about $106,000 listed according to the staff report that will be channeled multiple projects into this overall project. So it's not inconsequential, and we need to have strong expectations for it.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Why don't we move along to our last item here before we're totally out of time? Oh, our state legislative priorities survey. Mr. Otten, perhaps? And Mr. Leo.
Deacon Mayor, Napp, members of city council, Mark Otten, Public and Government Affairs Director, here with the items dating to the 2021 LOC legislative priorities. This is a biannual item that we do every two years where LOC polls the member cities to find out what their preferences are. This year, 26 different options were offered, and the city staff is recommending particularly four in particular. I'm going to share my screen here if I can. Let's see, I thought I had screen sharing capacity, but here we go.
Well, we have a quick moment. Director Greg Leo, Legislative Consultant to the city. Thank you, thanks for having me, Mayor Napp and Counsel.
Thank you, Greg. The items recommended for city council consideration for LOC are items expedited citing for shelter and affordable housing, item H, housing and services investment, item G, mental health services delivery, and item W, right-of-way slash franchise fees authority preservation. And we suggest the two additional items for input pertaining to supporting the DEQ drinking water services funding request and supporting tort liability reform, which was an item, item Y, that was listed on the LOC. These four items are somewhat consistent with the prior city council selections in 2019. But city staff are happy to advance any set of priorities that you feel are important. These are the priorities that were suggested by various LOC committees looking at legislative issues. And then the city staff has polled our various departments and divisions regarding their priorities. But we've also looked at the reality of the legislature coming up in 2021, and there'll be very little money or no money available. So items that are not a legislative priority will not fare very well, and items that require money that are not a legislative priority will fare even less well. Greg, perhaps you care to make a brief comment?
Well, these are all very consistent with our previous goals. I would say F and W are both I would say F and W are both really about opposing preemption. Preemption, when they were doing the emergency shelter citing in House Bill 4001, the one area that we had some concern about was the supersiting of homeless shelters. Under this proposal, there's a plan that's been used in California that actually preserves cities' ability to make those choices. I think that's really important. Right-of-ways is a kind of a perennial issue and maintaining sources of revenue for the city at this point are extremely important. The mental health services, I just wanted to say, this is different than some of the things we've seen in the past and in that. It has a lot more programmatic detail to it, really some fine work, I think, done by the committee on that. And of course, housing, we're all acutely aware of the need to support housing and shelters. And this investment would, I think, help with that. So I think it's a darn good list and I do appreciate all the good work of the city staff and of the league committees bringing us forward.
So Mayor and Council, would you have any questions or issues that you'd like to bring to our attention?
I would like to first say, if I could, if I'm reading the staff report correctly, item J and N and Nancy were on our list last year and were considered priorities by our council, I believe. And I'd like to have us understand why staff is emphasizing those at this point.
All right, let's find item J. You said item J, is that correct?
Yes.
Infrastructure financing and resilience. Normally, you're correct, this would be an item. However, it requires money.
Sadly, there's not be much money at the legislature this time and much of the money we get will come from federal sources, I believe, some of the Federal Transportation Act, for example. But right now, they're all refiguring the state budgets and it looks like there will be a considerable revenue deficit that the legislature will be covering. So that would make this priority less viable, I think. And is it the same for N?
Item N, which is long-term transportation infrastructure funding, yes, unfortunately. The legislature has passed two transportation packages in the last decade. The chances of getting another one in this funding environment is nothing. And actually, LOC, if you read in detail, their item talks about OREGO, just expanding the OREGO vehicle mile tax experiment. That's all that item pertains to for LOC's priority. It does mean really more money for transportation funding.
I guess I would like to be more of an optimist to think that if there's an administrative change late this year, that there might be significant federal investment in transportation. And I only don't want to be caught flat-footed with nothing prepared if we get into that scenario, that might be more of a rosy outlook.
Your city staff and legislative council will be ready to jump on the opportunity should it arise.
The first words out of my mouth were Boone Bridge, but none of these really fit that situation. But I do think for the city's priorities, we can put those away at the top of the list, indeed. Okay, Council? Let's see, I need to see if I've got everybody here and I don't have. I think Counselor West had his hand up earlier, so I'm going to ask him first.
Thank you, Your Honor. A quick question. I know I saw here as a priority under mental health services, which I have expressed previously that our region's in crisis and continues to be. And then with the economic downturn, the lack of ability for people to receive unemployment fund, just the situation that we're in that's being exacerbated by a number of things, I think that this problem could get worse. I know our council has vocally supported universal health systems, being able to get the need certificate to build that private investment in a hospital here in our community so we can provide more services in the region to those that need it most with mental health. And there obviously is a crisis need at hand. Are we lobbying for that need certificate? Is that something that is included in this when we talk about mental health? It's one of the bigger mental health issues and infrastructure issues facing the city right now. I wonder if that would be, should include or is included, or what your thoughts are?
Mayor Napp, Counselor West, that's an excellent question. At this point, this is for the LOC legislative priorities. So this isn't really focused necessarily on the city's priorities, more as it is giving input to LOC on what the state-level priorities for the organization will be. To answer your question, certainly the city is advocating for that. However, in the current certificate need process, that is now underway and the city is not intervening in that because that's a current process now underway. However, previously, we have certainly talked to our legislators about the very issues that you have brought up. Great.
Counselor Lindvile.
I'll just preface my comments by saying, I recognize I was not here when the legislative priorities in 1819 were determined. And I recognize that the work that's been done by the staff is working from those legislative priorities to the 2021 or the 21 legislative priorities for LOC. But I did want to just state that we are in a very different time right now. To rely on what was current in 2019 may not be relevant or primarily of concern in 2020 and 2021. And the issue that I am concerned about right now is number E, which is digital equity and inclusion. And given that we are in a situation where we have no schools, likely will not have schools starting in the fall and students will have to have synchronous ability to be able to be, to access education. I believe that this will rise to a higher level, even though it requires funding. And I would like, and I know that the statement here is that it's primarily an inner-city and a rural issue, but I just want to bring it forward that it isn't necessarily, I think it's an urban issue because even though we have 25, three service, not all of our homes have broadband capability. So this becomes an issue of equity. And most of our citizens of color do not have access to broadband capability in order for them to access healthcare, education, some of the other services that connectivity would allow them. So it becomes a safety issue as well as an educational issue. And I think it is, since we are in the MSA for Portland, for the Portland area, we are not really considered the rural. But I will say this, even in the rural areas, access to broadband is an inequitable issue because it's primarily provided access to non-Hispanic and non-persons of color in those rural areas. So if we're really going to look at ways that we can have an impact on systemic racism issues, this is a big one, I think, especially in the environment of COVID-19 and the need for our students particularly to access educational resources and for healthcare, especially if we go backwards and go back farther into Phase One. So I would like us to consider that one as well.
So we get four choices in the survey. And so if one of these comes on, then something else has got to come off in order to meet the requirements of the survey. So, you know, and this is a priority setting. Of course, this sets an agenda so that all of the LOC can work together for these. And so that's why I think it's important to make the deadline on August 7th. Yeah, we do have the ability to, some additional comments that we could bring up, some of these arguments in the comments section, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And we're recommending two comments, one that you've seen in the report.
Could we add Counselor Lindvile's well-thought-out comments under that section?
Sure, we already suggested, one of their other items, we would just go ahead and add item E if you like, then.
Counselor Lindvile has a comment?
I'm just wondering if, and I recognize, but even your statements in the recommendation, the summary review that you did mark with the staff acknowledges that number Q ties in really well with H. And I'm wondering if one or the other might be sufficient, given that we're also dealing with, we're recommending the issues around shelter and affordable housing in F. And I know that the big, and I heard Mr. Leo's comments about maintaining local control over those decisions, which I would agree are priorities. And we don't want to lose that. And we don't want the state dictating where those shelter and housing areas are going to be. So I will fully agree. I'm just wondering if there is no way to combine those, the mental health and the affordable housing issues and not have two that look like they're very similar.
I would think so.
Absolutely. So, you know, of those two, I would just say, we have done a lot of work on shelter and affordable housing. Our planning director is a technical advisor to that work group. We actually have quite a bit of influence and activity. Mark and I sat in on a couple of the meetings there and I'm participating in a work group on that now. So, you know, with all those things said, I think we can kind of cover the citing of shelter and affordable housing. If that's one, we want to pull down to the other comments area in order to put the broadband up, to raise as one of the four. So in other words, there might be other ways to have influence here on it. Counselor West?
Let me get unmuted here. For the broadband issue, what, so can you please just clarify? So you would take the housing, affordable housing one and make it in comments and not make it one of the four priorities? Or can you clarify that for me real quick before I ask my question, what you just said?
Yeah, I'm saying you could pull the affordable housing shelter and affordable housing one down to the comments section and put the broadband in as one of the four choices.
And do we feel like we've made really sufficient progress on the, because I think for me, affordable housing, well, they're both equity issues, right? Affordable housing, for me, the big thing is homeless and the homelessness and the mental health and all of those, I think that is like an epic crisis that has to be.
It's a super important issue, no question.
Yeah, and it's just, for me, it is a moral imperative. And so do we feel like we've made room on that housing piece and then we can still work on that equity issue with the broadband? Or is broadband an issue that Wilsonville residents, even people on the lower income scale or people that are, people of color, that they're not having access to broadband as we face the school year, which is a really great concern that Counselor Lindvile brought up? So if you look at it, you had to prioritize need and likability of getting something done, where do you think we're at when we look at that, weighing those two options?
Well, I always worry that our franchise fees are under attack by various groups that want to take that authority away from the cities. And we're always working with the league to kind of get them to think of that top of mind. And so in a way, because these are league priorities, we're trying to encourage the other members of the league not to give on preemption issues in any way. So that's kind of like always been our number one principle is let city councils make decisions rather than preempting your authority to decide.
Yeah, I really love that. And do you think that moving that housing one into the comments affects that overall, that goal that we have consistently been advocating for?
It's really up to the council. I mean, they're all important priorities and unfortunately, we only have four slots here.
We have four slots, okay.
All right, we're 15 minutes past the end of our meeting here, so we need to come to a consensus here if we can. Counselor Akval.
Thank you. I'm kind of stuck on this one because we only have four slots. And I agree with everything that's been said by the rest of council members that these are all important things. Just quickly looking at the data actually that we have available that I think is going to be presented in our next session on the community survey. I noticed on the community survey on page, let's see, 119 of our packet, I noticed this when I was reviewing the material because I thought it was interesting and it was much higher than I had anticipated. But there was 96% of the community members said that they do have access to internet. I don't know how that is split out on demographics and we weren't, you know, that information wasn't supplied in this survey presentation, but I was surprised because it was higher than what I had thought it would be. And I do agree that it's a very critical and important thing, especially in our current environment. I also noticed that on affordable housing, there was only 37% of community members that said that they felt there was good or excellent access to affordable housing, which is quite low. And so looking at those numbers, I hesitate to bump affordable housing because I think that that data does say that it's a need for the community. I think there was another stat in the survey that said 50% of the community members are cost burdened with housing. And so that's another kind of serious data piece that's describing what the experience is for our community. So I struggle with this because I think that all of the items are important, but just to bring those facts into this conversation as we're trying to decide what to do, those were pieces that I noticed.
What would you like to do here? I think Mr. Otten's comment that it, we're urging the League of Cities toward an advocacy position for the entire state of Oregon, not just for the community here, which is not to say we are not concerned about our local community, but clearly a lot of the issues that we're being faced with, you know, transcend our city boundaries.
So the staff, we're happy to do whatever the council would like. We do understand the dilemma that we find ourselves in regarding these. It might be that what we could do would be to take one of the items that we have suggested, one of the four, and to go ahead and just change it to make it a comment. And maybe we would keep the housing. And, well, yes, yeah, you're absolutely right. These are all very tough ones. We could move this one down to comments or we could move this one down to comments. But as you indicate, they're all very tough ones to decide on.
And remember, this is just the LOC survey. We have our own legislative agenda, which is not limited to four issues, so.
Correct.
Well, if I was doing it by myself, I'd probably move the housing and services investment to a comment and move the broadband up. But I clearly understand everyone's discussion. We just have to do something here so it gets done.
Hey, Mayor, can we make a point on the broadband real quick?
Yeah, and maybe Mark and Greg can talk more about this, but Mayor, as you know, we just got the comment on the 5G. I think this broadband is really a lot about 5G and the infrastructure associated with it, which is very it, which is very controversial right now because of the health and safety-related issues. So I don't think this is really talking about getting internet services to everyone. I think this is talking about the technology and what local government can control and what the federal communications organ, FCC, is controlling. That's what I think this issue is, and maybe Greg and Mark can explain it better. And if that's the case, I don't know that that's what you want to say your priority is.
Thank you. Counsel Linville?
I think this is a lot about 5G.
I was not advocating for R, which is the broadband item. I was advocating for E, which is the digital equity and inclusion. Doesn't have anything to do with 5G.
That's more demographic, expanding internet and broadband to underserved communities.
Yeah, that.
That's different.
Yeah.
This is different, yep. And it could be put on our other comments area.
Counsel Linville, are you, you know, after the discussion, do you have any other recommendation on how to handle this Item E?
No, I fully agree that we're, you know, I mean, we probably could pick six different ones, but I think if we're talking about a statewide issue that relates to digital equity and inclusion, I think, and given where we are with COVID, it's a crisis that has got to be addressed pretty soon. I also think that there's a possibility that there might be federal money that's coming down that would assist with this. I think there's also rent relief and some other assistance that is going to come down federally for the eviction crisis that's coming, so we may not need to fight as hard for that. So I, you know, I think it's an important issue for the state, may not be as large an issue for our own local community, but I think given where we are with COVID and what I hear may happen as the fall comes along and into the next spring, that it may continue to be a priority. And I think it's one that actually the legislature is going to find difficult to ignore.
Hey, Mayor, we're about 25 minutes past the time, and we do have one person waiting to give public comment.
All right.
Perhaps then move Item E up to one of our four and move H to comment?
That's what I would do. Anybody else?
I like the idea of keeping it the way it is. I just think housing is a crisis, and so is homelessness, and I think the broadband issue affects more of the other parts of the state, even though it needs to be a state priority. If I look at the Oregon cities and it went ties to Wilsonville, I like it the way it was presented.
Okay. Counsel Lee? You're still muted?
I thought that was a good solution to move the housing piece or combine the two that are about housing together, or make one a comment and move broadband up. I think digital equity is going to be, I mean, I agree, it's going to be more important every week that goes by.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Akval?
Yeah, if there's a way we can combine some on this, I mean, honestly, right, we're going to fill out the survey, and they're going to interpret our filling out of the survey, right, and wrap it into everyone else's responses. So if there is a way that we can combine something on this survey, and I can put that forward, yeah.
All right.
And I appreciate the discussion that we've all had on this. I think that's important, and I certainly appreciate Counsel Linville's thoughts of collectively what is needed for the state and what's important, what's important for our future right now, right? So.
Right. So while not unanimous, I think that the consensus lies with moving H, Housing and Services, to the comments section and putting the digital equity up in the top four. If we can proceed with that, we need to move along.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're well past here. Do we need break time between for recording purposes?
Five minutes, but before you go, Mayor, when you come back to the regular agenda, might I recommend that you move citizen comment ahead of communications? We do have one citizen that's been waiting patiently to provide comment, and we don't have anybody virtually wishing to do so. So we could allow the citizen to provide their public comment, and then we could be done.
We will do that. Thank you very much. We'll see you all in five.